Thank you all set. The October 2nd, 2025 hearing of the zoning board's appeals in the town of Grand Island is now in session. This meeting may also be joined by a Zoom through our link or webpage and viewed live on YouTube. I'd like to introduce the better members of the board, Betty Harris, John Battle, Michael Tadaro, our alternate, Greg Doc Center, and I'm the chairman, Robert Messmer. Also in attendance tonight are code enforcement officer Nick Cotera and Rhonda Fuller. Matters before the see the board this evening will be taken in the order in which they appear on the agenda. The board shall hear and decide appeals pursuant to the provisions of the laws of the state of New York. This is legal hearing and all participants should be considered to be sworn to make accurate statements and charged with bringing all pertinent facts to the board's attention. Any discovery of false testimony and/or withholding of facts would be grounds for a reeling review and reconsideration. As each agenda item is addressed, the appellant or their representative will be addressed to present their request. After the board hears from the appellant, we will hear from anyone wishing to speak for or against each issue. All parties will be required to give their name and address for the record. Once a determination has been made, any party who feels aggrieved by the ZBA's decision may file an article 78 proceeding with the state Supreme Court within 30 days of the filing of said decision with the town clerk's office. Couple of things, first of all, make sure your phones are turned off. Make sure you do not speak from where you're presently seated. Make sure you only come to the podium. We've had problems with this in the past. Make sure of that. Uh, one person at a time. If there's any items that have already been covered, you have new information, we'd like to hear from you. The first appellant would be number one, two, three, five, four, West Falls Link Road. Name and address, please.
My name is Kyle Sauer. My address is 2354 Falls Link.
Uh, tell us what you'd like to do.
I'd like to build a pole barn within 30 feet of the roadway, exactly 30 feet or more from the roadway, actually, after I measured it, but just because of the nearness, I was told that, you know, a driveway is supposed to be 50 feet.
Yes.
So I applied for a variance.
Okay, no, it's technically not a town road, is that correct?
That is technically not a town road, so it was a question and I figured to err on the better side of caution, so why not?
Good idea. Okay, anything further?
Um, my house, as you can see, it's on the south side of my house. We put it 22 feet off the property line. It's only gonna be a 21 foot tall building. And if it goes back any further next to my house, so that does meet the 50 foot standard, I have a septic system there. I can't move it closer to my home because the water and the gas lines are there. And if I wanted to put it behind my home, I get shut down because I have a waterway behind my house. And they don't want it to affect the hill, the stability of the hill.
So you're basically landlocked.
I am landlocked. That's the only place I got to put it. Unless I stuck it on top of my driveway and that's too close to the property line on that side.
Anything further?
Nope.
Why don't you have a seat for just a minute?
Alright.
Okay. Would anyone like to come forward in regard to the variance at 2354 Falls Link Road? Okay, Nick, anyone online? Okay, wanna give it a minute or what? Okay, uh, would someone make to make a motion to close the public meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Motion by Betty, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what's your opinion on this project?
I guess I'm a little concerned about the size of the building being close, so close to the road, a public road, so I guess I'm a little perplexed, so.
Right, it's not exactly a throughway.
Pardon?
Not exactly a throughway.
No, no it isn't.
Okay, the size of the building is not in, um, it's all in compliance. Problem there, just basically the 20 foot front yard setback.
My only small concern I have.
Okay, anything further?
No.
Betty?
No, he's only using it for storage and no commercial.
I will find out. Is there anything, is it gonna use for commercial purposes?
No, I'm gonna use it to store the equipment that I use to maintain the road, actually. Cause all my neighbors complain about seeing my tractor and the buckets and the backhoes and stuff. But the road doesn't fix itself and it's the only way I can do it, so.
Okay, stay right there.
Interesting, alright.
What was it? Any utilities inside the barn? It'll have to have electric just so I can see inside, but other than that, I don't have plans for it, no.
Okay, hang on, anything, any questions further?
I don't.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion on this project?
I can make the motion, make the motion for 2354 Falls Link in Grand Island. Necessary structure within front yard setback to a variance amount of 20 feet.
Okay, motion by Michael, seconded by?
Right.
Seconded by Greg, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, rationale?
Well, the structure is landlocked with other opportunities to put on his property. None of the neighbors seem to come in. He's maintaining the property and maintaining the neighborhood there.
Right, and it's also not a conventional road either.
Not gonna be under undesirable change to the character. The order, the neighbors will benefit by all his equipment being inside and covered up.
Good. Okay, anything further?
Are we good Rhonda? Okay.
Okay, on item number two, if someone chooses to leave during or after this meeting, during the presentation of this next variance, you're welcome to do so. You don't have to stick around. Uh, it's, variance is for 3012 Staley Road. Please come forward. Name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Sumit Majumdar, 3012 Staley Road.
Uh, tell us what you'd like to do.
Um, I'd like to request a variance, uh, for, um, the height and size of a storage facility and also, uh, an increase in fence height from three foot to six foot for the front fence.
Okay, and also I understand there's a, uh, front yard setback, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, anything further in regard to this?
Um, yeah, I've, I've applied for, um, agricultural district, um, zoning, uh, in September of, uh, uh, this year.
Yes.
And, um, I have, um, do you want me to give an explanation?
Sure.
Okay, sure. Um, so I have, um, I have several animals, including a disabled dog. Um, and, uh, I want to increase the fence height from three to six feet. I'm also in the, uh, um, in the process of getting a rehabilitation license for, for wildlife. Um, and also the, the processing or storage, uh, places for, um, processing of organic garlic that I'll be cultivating on the property.
So it will be cultivated on your property?
Yes, sir.
From what I see there, I don't see a whole lot of land available for that, is that correct?
Uh, there's, uh, four acres.
Well, but about roughly three and a half acres is pond.
Uh, yes, it's six and a half acres of ponds, sir.
Okay. Um, okay, right.
So, um, that's, uh, that's all.
Okay, and what would you be raising?
Um, I'm gonna be raising, uh, chickens and I'm also gonna be taking care of animals.
Okay. Alright, anything further?
No, sir.
Okay, why don't you have a seat?
Thank you.
Would anyone like to come forward in regard to the variance at 3012 Staley Road?
Hi, Mary Falser, 3013 Staley Road. Um, I'm an opponent of the building of this size. I've not seen one animal and I have a direct view line, not even a dog. Um, a quick Google search unfortunately led me to his company, biodiesel, being, um, closed by the DEC, um, for failure of keeping permits over the last seven years. And another few articles around 27 customers suing to get out of contract for leaking barrels. I'm concerned that this storage unit is going to end up being for business equipment, um, which could have leaky barrels or whatever. Um, I do not think the intent is really for agricultural or proper storage. I don't know what kind of building would need a 10,000 square foot storage building in a residential area. It should be in a commercial or an industrial area. It shouldn't be that close to the street. It shouldn't be that size and scope. It should be within variance if it's to be a shed for storage.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to go forward in regard to 3012?
Uh, Sherry Kern, 2905 Staley Road. We, Cal and Sherry, my husband and I are vehemently opposed to the requested multiple variances by the owner of 3012 Staley Road, and we ask you to consider our reasons why we are opposed. When we purchased our property on Staley back in 1979, we chose Staley because it had a country feel. We liked the quietness of the road, the single family dwellings with space between, the beauty of seeing properties well-kept and managed, the ability to walk down Staley or take family bike rides down to the river, all while enjoying the space along the way. In other words, we wanted and decided to purchase our property due to the rural setting. Many things have changed since then and many of those joys have been stripped away and no longer exist. We bring up our concerns at almost every town board meeting and have been doing so for three years. We were admittedly the boiling frogs, illustrating how people can fail to notice or respond to significant negative changes if they happen gradually. The tale says that a frog placed in boiling water will jump out, but a frog placed in cool water that is slowly heated will stay until it boils to death, unable to perceive the incremental increase in danger. Perhaps we were too busy with raising children or with our careers, or we put too much trust in those we thought would look out for our best interests. A gradual erosion of freedoms and worsening conditions were brought to the attention of past Grand Island officials by Staley Road residents. Complaints and letters were ignored with no response. As a result, those of us on the Make Staley Road Safe Committee formed three years ago have urged Staley Road residents to be mindful of gradual changes going forward, to trust their instincts and to take action to prevent further negative situations from developing unchecked. Therefore, I took action and after doing some research regarding Buffalo Biodiesel, which this landowner currently owns, info, which was not hard to find by the way, because of local news coverage as late as this past August, we are very concerned what this warehouse and a 10,000 square foot, uh, area is a warehouse will be used for. Perhaps collecting or storing used oil, a commercial activity in an R1 zone. His company has been operating illegally for seven years according to the DEC. That is why we are here today. Many of us have noticed that a sizable area of land has already been cleared to the left of the driveway at 3012 Staley. Then notices were received from the town indicating the intent by the owner to put a structure that requires multiple variances. Why has the property already been cleared? Seems presumptuous given that it would be too close to the road, six times the current code allowance size, too high, and have a fence twice the allowable height. Why? Maybe so people can't see the activity? Aside from the pharmaceutical companies, Staley Road is zoned as R1, not commercial property. We have been fighting to have changes made to Staley that once again will allow us to enjoy a walk or bike past our neighbors and homes without fear of being hit by speeding vehicles and huge semi trucks, often driven by disrespectful people threatening our safety in order to get to or come home from work. That has been a three-year battle and maybe you view it as unrelated, but we will not be boiling frogs and these variance requests should not be granted to any homeowner living on this R1-zoned road. Please keep our road R1 by refusing to allow these variances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, anyone further on, uh, 3012 Staley? Try not to repeat yourself with what's already been said. Name and address, please.
Jim Carlson, 2885 Staley. I'm speaking to the mic like he did not do very well. He did make a comments about processing something there. Biodiesel is a chemical process for its production. It does result in waste products that are, I should say byproducts, that either waste or sometimes have a commercial value. The building itself is industrial size. It is not within what we have on Staley at this point in time. And I'm very concerned that, uh, there is also additional work being done on the back of the property. I've seen 10-wheelers moving out. Makes me think they've been mining topsoil. I can't, I don't go back on their property to look, but I can see where they've been doing the work back there. I am really concerned this is a bad, bad precedent to allow this variance to happen because then other people will buy on the island, buy on Staley Road and try to turn it into industrial. An argument can be made against Fresenius and for Thermo Fisher. At least they are grandfathered because they've been there longer than my wife and I have. But they themselves are not Lily White because they currently have DEC issues with their discharge into Six Mile Creek from their, uh, water treatment system. And I think this situation here, if it, in fact, that building is allowed to be built, it'll turn into a processing factory and they, who knows, will maybe use those ponds for disposal purposes. Or if there's any solids to be gotten rid of, they'll dump them in the ponds and make a mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for 3012 Staley? Name and address, please.
Ron Schlifke, 3348 Staley Road. Uh, when the previous owner was there, I used to fish there and, um, in the back. And you, you, the zoning board allowed that pond to be made and that pond takes up all his property. I mean, he doesn't have a lot of, uh, you know, area to do anything else, but he's got that pond back there. And, uh, it's one thing to let him build a pond. That pond's a nice pond right now. Got a lot of good fish in there and stuff. To let a sketchy individual like this guy come in and dump, you know, just run the risk of having biodiesel disposed back there and stuff, forget it. You know, I'm gonna hold everybody responsible right now if, if there's a disaster. You know, I mean, this guy's got a horrible reputation. It, it, just Google it. I mean, that's all I got to say and then the traffic is a whole other deal, but that's already been explained. I mean, come on, really?
Okay, anyone further it for 3012 Staley?
Paul Kotman, 246 Timberlink. I do not live on Staley Road, however, as a Grand Island resident and speaking before the town board many, many times, uh, I can say that I'm vehemently opposed to this project. Uh, much of which I was going to say has already been said, so I'm not going to take up your time with that. But I do think that a couple of points really you need to consider. Number one is who you're dealing with and their reputation. It goes a long way. And that's number one. Um, to build a building of this size over four times what's allowable, that close to the road. I visited this property, in fact, I've been on this property on one of the garden walks. And to have a building 27 feet tall, this close to the road, to be shielded by a six-foot fence doesn't make any sense at all, especially for the neighbors across the street. They're gonna look out their front window and what are they going to see? So that being said, no one can positively say what the usage of this building going forward is going to be. We can only assume. What you need to do as a zoning board is to take away that assumption and deny this request. Because the precedent that you will be setting, not only on Staley Road, but all of Grand Island, to build these huge structures in an R1A, which is a low-density, single-family home neighborhood, this is what our zoning code and our master plan is there to protect. I've spoken many times in front of the town board on this issue. This is not the only request for variances, property development districts. Um, anything changing our zoning code really needs to be thoroughly, thoroughly researched for its impact on the future of Grand Island. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone further for 3012 Staley? Name and address, please.
John Gross, 2783 Staley Road. I am, uh, going on record as opposed to this new structure there. Um, for one thing, again, I don't want to repeat everybody said, but the building is too big, too close to the road. And the reputation of this gentleman is in question as far as the research we've done. Um, and if it, at all, if it creates more traffic to this road, we're, I'm totally against it. We try to walk our animal every single night on that road and we have to actually postpone due to the traffic because it's too dangerous. There's no place to walk. Uh, you're either on the road or you're halfway in the ditch or I twisted my ankle, I don't know how many times, from the broken parts of the road, which when they resurfaced that road, they went over eight inches from the existing road. So that is only two inches thick. It's breaking up all over the place and it's too darn dangerous to walk or ride a bike on that road. And that building just does not belong there. I thank you for your time.
Anyone further for 3012 Staley?
How you doing? Brett Lombardo, 3387 Staley Road. I'm not gonna attack the man for anything that he has. My only question is he mentioned agriculture. I personally sit on the ag advisory board here for Grand Island. There's not really anything that he's gonna be able to do on that property that's agriculturally related. So how he's gonna get into the ag district for Erie County, I don't understand that either. I also sit on the Farm Bureau, Erie County Farm Bureau Board of Directors. I just see a problem coming down. I mean, having an agricultural background myself, I don't know what you need in 8,300, 10,000 foot. I don't know how big the building truly is, 27 feet high. That's not really an ag building. And I don't know what, if you, I think I heard him say garlic, organic garlic. That's a whole heck of a lot of garlic to store in that big of a building. I just question what the building's really gonna be used for. That's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further for 3012 Staley?
Paul Zimmerman, 3014 Staley Road. Um,
You are the next door neighbor, is that correct?
Pardon me?
You are the next door neighbor, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we should build a big building like that in front, on the front lawn, close to the road. It's a eyesore to me. I can't look out my kitchen window and I'll see nothing but a big building. The work they're doing there, I don't understand because they're filling in back of the pond, they're filling with it, something. I don't know what they're building back there, but whatever it is, they're, they're filling wetland back there and it shouldn't be done with it. That's about all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone further for 3012 Staley?
This is Ron Fortman. I own 2944 Staley Road. Um, I have pretty much the same concerns as everyone else here. I don't want to repeat, um, outside of the fact the building is just too big. He already has a piece of equipment from his, uh, truck in the driveway that represents his, his business. And I just wondered if everybody from Staley Road would just stand up for a minute to show him how many people don't want this.
There's been many letters sent and, um,
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for 3012 Staley? Okay, Nick, anyone online? Anyone else? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to close the public meeting?
I'll make a motion to close.
Motion by Betty, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's talk about this.
Could you just speak into the microphone so ever, I know you do, but.
Thought I was, okay.
At least I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll try to speak up. Uh, would somebody like to make, we close the public meeting, would someone like to make, uh, give us information about or your opinions?
I believe it's excessive, very excessive. It's too close to the road. Um, it's too commercial in appearance. There's over 3 million and a half value of property in the immediate neighborhood of this surrounding property. And I see devaluation with something like that and no sight view, no nothing. It's a self-created problem.
Right. Okay, then my, my biggest concern is, uh, they, we're talking about agriculture, but I don't see where you can grow enough to do anything. Uh, John, anything about you? You?
Yeah, I'm agreeing. I don't see where they can do agriculture. They can farm any area that amount.
Right.
The building is just way too big, too close to the road. The fence too high. It's not a good-looking fence. Um,
Okay.
I'm not, uh, it's my opinion.
I'll, uh, I'll agree with you as far as it's just, um, excessive for all the variances. It's, um, pretty big excessive, um, variance and, um, obviously, I mean, neighbors that are against it, so. I'm, uh, I'm not liking it.
Okay, as far as the, uh, in a narrow one area, I don't believe we've ever given any variance that's even close to this large. Michael?
No, I'm in agreeance with everyone here on the board. The neighbors have spoke. It's too big, too close to the road.
Okay.
And it would cause an undesirable change to the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And we also have, um, 36 letters here stating that they are against it. So, anything further?
We should close the public hearing, I think.
We did.
We did, I missed that. I missed that, I'm sorry.
We did.
Okay, but, uh, for the fence, just so we're all on the same page for the fence, on his property.
Mike, talk into the phone.
On his property with the fence, he left the front, the front section open.
Yeah.
That's what he's asking for the variance for, is for that front section only. To my understanding, and maybe the town can help us here. I believe there's a certain footage that's already six feet. That, is that correct, Rhonda?
It's already too tall.
In the front yard setback already, so just so.
He's proposing, he's proposing a new fence.
Well, it, existing also is not in compliance.
No, but we're only talking about the new fence.
Right.
Just wanna make sure all clear on that.
Okay, would, uh, let's take these one at a time. Anything further, first of all?
I'm good.
Okay. Let's do the, uh, square footage for this. Would someone like to make a motion for or against, uh, the 10,000-foot building, which is 8,300 square feet?
Yeah, I'll take that. At 3012 Staley Road, the first variance of maximum floor area, detached storage, 700 square feet, looking for 8,300 square foot variance. I believe we should be denied.
Okay, motion by John to deny, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second variance of max height of 21 feet, they want to go 27 feet, the six-foot height variance, I believe should be denied.
Okay, motion by John, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Betty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This was to deny, yes.
Right, then the, uh, um, the height of the fence, I, I misspoke on the second one there, it was a storage structure of that height. And then the height variance for the fence, three feet, six feet proposed, three-foot height variance, that should be denied.
Right, okay, motion by John to deny, seconded by?
Michael.
By Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the required front yard setback for an ACC. And the required front yard setback for an ACC structure. Oh, twenty five foot front yard setback for storage structure. I believe that should be denied.
Okay, motion by John to deny, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those motions are denied. Okay, rationale?
Will this variance cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? Yes, it will.
Okay, as far as the, the size, is that for all the items listed, Michael?
Well, it's for the size of the building, for the fence, there's no other fence, there's no other fence in the front yards of Staley Road to the best of my knowledge. The height is the same thing, this is all self-inflicted. Self-inflicted items that he is trying to put on the property that is not needed.
Okay, can I add?
Sure.
Would be an adverse of impact to the neighborhood.
I would think so, would be, yes, yep. Okay, anything else?
No, self-created.
Okay. Item number three, if anyone wants to leave, you're more than welcome to leave.
Are we good Rhonda?
It's forty five forty East River Road. Kayed Morshead.
Give him a minute.
Just hang out a minute.
Everybody's leaving, they don't want to hear me speak.
They all left.
No, mine's only nine thousand square.
Okay, go for it, name and address.
Forty feet tall.
Kayed Morshead, forty five forty East River Road. Okay, Mr. Morshead, tell us what you'd like to do.
I would just like to enclose my carport. I need more space. Got a bunch of classic cars, sports cars, exotic cars, boats, I love speedboats. I actually put up, ten years ago, I got a variance from you guys.
I remember.
And, you know, I wanted to go bigger, but I tried to keep it conservative, so I didn't have any issues. And for almost ten years now, I've, I've tried. And I put up a carport, I was going to try to just alleviate some of the stuff out of my garage that maybe isn't so important to be inside. Which is, was not easy, there's not much. Man, within the first week I got robbed, you know, somebody stole my snow blower, brand new factory rims and tires from my truck. Things that, you know, like I said, I thought would be okay. A week later, each of my neighbors got their cars stolen. So it's just, you know, between it being outside and then I've realized, you know, snow's going to blow in there, it's just not optimal. So I just really need to just, structure's there, the carport wise, I just need to put some metal walls up to identically match the barn. That's already there, it's way in the back corner of my property, I don't see, you know, why we couldn't get that going on. I just want a nice cold storage, I can maneuver things around. I lay everybody off in the winter, I'm off of work four and a half months of the year, that's like my haven. So, you know, if I have that cold storage area, I can just swap, you know, toys around and. Get working on them and same thing, you know, back and forth.
Okay, anything further?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's have a seat for a minute.
Okay.
Would anyone like to come forward in regard to forty five four zero East River Road?
My neighbor's fishing in Florida, he forgot that, he said he wanted me to let you guys know, please give this variance. So he doesn't have to look at a hodgepodge of things anyway under the carport.
Okay, thank you.
You gotta start doing ramps.
Anyone further, anything would like to say about forty five forty East River Road? No. Nick, anything online? Okay, nobody? Okay. All right, who would like to make a motion to close the public meeting at forty five forty East River?
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay, motion by Greg, seconded by? By Betty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What's your pleasure, guys?
Well, I, I went, I was going by the site and I was going to ask how you were going, I assumed you were going to make it look just like the rest of the building there.
Oh, yeah. I feel surprised looking property, so of course I went.
No, it's a really nice looking property. You know, I think it's already, the carport's basically already there, so he's just enclosing it, I, I don't see a big problem, so.
Okay. Anything further?
No, I think we'll clean up, clean up and make the property more, more sleek looking and like I said, put all stuff away for the neighbors, I don't kind of look at it either.
Do you have any extra storage?
Okay, would someone like to make a motion for the variance at forty five forty East River?
I can make the motion.
Motion by Michael? Go for it.
I would like to make a motion for forty five forty East River Road detached storage area for variance amount of nine hundred square feet.
Okay, my, my, motion by Michael anyway, seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Rationale.
You're good.
Need for storage and keep neighborhood.
Make sure you get a permit.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Right, okay, so I'm good, I can just start building?
Well, just communicate with the town, make sure that you're all good to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, rationale.
Need for storage?
Yep.
Could close it in, make it look, building look better.
Yeah, I agree.
So improve the neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not going to be an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, item number four, three three five eight East River.
Good evening, Chris Burke, three three five eight East River.
Yes, tell us what you'd like to do.
I am looking to ultimately build a garage or add on to my garage, build a third car port. Right now I have a concrete pad. But I'm transparent, my wife's truck doesn't fit in our garage, so I need somewhere to put that, I have young children, so we'd rather have them getting in and out of the coal. So we want to extend that, I do need a little bit extra space on the side, so that I can build that.
So you're looking for a four foot side yard variance, is that correct?
That is correct, talk to my David, he's good with that.
Okay. All right, anything further? Have a seat. Would anyone like to come forward in regard to three three five eight East River? Nick, anyone online? Okay, someone would like to make a motion to close the public meeting for three three five eight East River.
I'll make a motion to close.
Motion by Betty to close, seconded by?
Michael.
By Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It appears as though it's not a huge variance band, it means four, four feet.
I guess, the neighbor's not here, but I, my concern when I saw your property was that it will be kind of getting close to the neighbor's house and stuff.
So it still leaves him, leaves him about twelve feet and then it leaves me with about nine, so there's still a good variance there. His fence is right on my line, he said, I'm going to put windows in, make it look very aesthetic for him, so he was going to.
Okay, anything further? John?
Well, I'm good.
Betty?
No.
Michael?
I'm all set.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion for three three five eight East River?
Yeah, for three three five eight East River. The variances are eight foot proposed, eight foot proposed. Or twelve foot requirement, eight foot proposed, which is a four foot variance setback, so, for the variance, so.
Okay, my, motion by Greg, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, rationale?
I don't think it's going to be an undesirable change to the character of the house, the neighbor's okay with it. He's going to be using it for storage for his vehicles and for his children. It is self-created, but I think it's going to be nice and leave enough room in between the properties and be a nice fit for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Good Rhonda?
Get a permit. Number five, two two four one Grand Island Boulevard.
Brian Burt, twenty two forty one Grand Island Boulevard, Town Tavern. Basically, the variances for. Sign that was up, we are moving the sign to the opposite side of property. The sign was originally a TC Tavern's sign, which they had in the past, got variance for the size that it was. We put up the same graphics to make the same size as that. Apparently it is over the size of the standard sign.
Right.
So this is what the variance.
So yeah, I'm assuming you're going to put it on a pole, is that correct?
It'd be metal structure, be eight foot, all, all the, to the code, what the codes are for this.
So you need a variance for the location and a variance for the size?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
A variance for the location.
Not for?
It's just the size, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
Eight squared feet.
Okay. Anything further?
Just to reiterate, you know, there was a variance prior for, for the size of the sign that, that TC's had.
But now you're relocating.
What was that? I didn't hear that.
There was.
In the past, there was a variance for the size of the sign that was, that was there, which we, we matched the same, so I just wanted to.
Is this the sign you're going to be putting up in the air that's there?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there a reason you weren't going to use the existing sign because that was so obvious?
Well, we're, it's actually the same sign, we're just putting it on the other side of the property.
But where it was, it was such an eye catcher.
Well, actually where it was, the tree actually blocked a lot of, yeah, so that's why we're putting it to the other side.
Yeah, it's all the same, and that's for extra parking places?
Uh, no, there's no extra parking where it says, it, it, I mean, it, it wasn't convenient in the spot that was at. But it also was blocked by the big pine tree that's on that side of the property.
It's a nice sign, I saw it sitting on a lawn.
Yeah, well, hopefully we'll have it up in the air, yes.
Is anybody want to map?
I just have a seat for a minute. Would anyone like to come forward in regard to the variance at two two four one Grand Island Boulevard? No. Nick, anyone online? Okay, and would someone like to make a motion to close the public meeting? Motion by Betty, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What would you, what's your opinion on this?
I think, I think we let it pass, it's been passed in the, in the past, it's a great island business, thriving, successful and then, and giving back to the community. And I think they should be able to represent themselves with their sign.
Anything further? One thing.
I will say it does look bigger where it's at, I'll admit you said, it does look pretty big.
I would say one thing, make sure you don't block the McDonald's sign, that wouldn't be good. I'm serious, serious about that. Okay.
Well, there's, there's, obviously, there's eight foot, we have eight foot containers in the lot.
Right.
So it'll be the minimum eight foot, but it's, there's that.
Okay, I don't want to see someone come back having a kid about it. That meanable, see their sign.
But I didn't realize you guys had already had a variance for that sign, that I didn't.
TC's Tavern had it.
Yeah. Okay, would someone like to make a motion for the sign at two two four one Grand Island Boulevard?
I can make a motion.
Motion by Michael, go ahead.
Uh, two two four one Grand Island Boulevard, I'll make a motion for max square footage for a pole sign. Requirement sixty square feet, proposed is one hundred and twenty eight square feet, the variance amount of sixty eight square feet. I, I agree that we should pass it.
Okay, motion by Michael, seconded by?
Greg.
By, by Betty, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, rationale?
You got it, you want it.
Well, he already, he already owns a sign, first of all.
Well, it was already, there was a variance for the size, so.
And it was, it was hidden in the, in the trees.
It does look a lot bigger now.
Just make sure it doesn't interfere with someone else. Okay, anything further?
No, but for the, for the rationale, it was a sign that was already used before and.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number six, sixteen oh nine Fix Road. Andrew Yacki. Okay, name and address, please.
How's it going? I'm Andrew Yacki, one six zero nine Fix Road. What I'm looking to do is build a shed roughly six foot, foot off the property line, well, a little bit over that. My lot is a little cocked, so, so I just want to square it up with the house. It's going to be roughly fourteen by twenty feet in size. By, by twelve feet tall. And it'll be sided to match the house and everything. Yeah, a hundred fifty feet from the road.
Okay, anything further?
Yeah. George Yacki is dead, sixteen eighty one West River Road, I'm also a contractor. Yeah, he wants to get six foot from the property line, he, he just built a brand new house, so it's a new build. And we're going to make it look exactly like the house, we're going to use the exact same materials as the house. It'll, you know, and it's a hundred fifty feet from the road.
Okay. All right.
Is there a reason why you can't do the twelve foot variance?
Do you want an answer, do you want? Well, he just spent almost a half a million dollars on his house and he wants, he doesn't want to take up any more room out of his backyard.
So we know we're just trying to tuck it close.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that'll leave you over the side yard.
Pardon?
That'll leave you with that nice side yard.
What's that?
That's not my property over there.
No.
There's another house there now.
Oh, and so this is another lot?
He's, he's, he's not getting us out here.
That's not us, we're behind that house.
Okay, oh, that's right, because you weren't up when this was done.
So we go like this way, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I got pictures too, if you want to see the.
Well, I've seen, I think most of us here have seen.
Okay.
I forgot that it wasn't in math.
Okay, anything further?
Well, just, just, I, I guess, one of the, like, when I was talking to Nick, one of the big things is like water runoff, but. The house behind there is, is less than twelve feet away. And they're like sky high, they're a lot higher, if anything, his, his yard's going to get flooded, you know, so. And there's like a swale there too, so, you know, I can't see water being an issue at all.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Building's not going to go in the swale.
No, 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 there's a fence, he's got a, it's a fenced in yard. So it's going to be inside his fence, six foot from the back and the side. Yeah. And there's no, no one on the side of him. At all.
Okay, have a seat. Would anyone like to come forward in regard to the variance at sixteen oh nine Fix Road? Nick, anyone online? I guess he loses. Okay, who would like to make a motion to close the meeting for sixteen oh nine Fix?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Greg, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, would someone like to make a, a motion in regard to this project?
I don't have any problem with it, I can make the motion if you wish.
Yeah, I, we won't buy it and it's all fenced in, so it's.
I'm sure everybody's going to be done, well, looks like everybody's going to be done well done, so, nice.
Motion by John, seconded by?
Mike.
You want to do it individually or what are we doing here on this?
Let's see, there's only one, I believe. There are two? Okay, okay.
Do them individually.
Okay, mo- motion by John for which one?
I'm, let me do the first one here, the sixteen oh nine Fix Road, required side yard setback of six feet setback.
Okay, motion by John for the six foot side yard setback, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Betty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sixteen oh nine Fix Road, rear yard setback variance of six feet.
Motion by John, seconded by?
Greg.
Greg, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, Nick, does he have to get a permit for this? Make sure you get a permit. Okay. You're all set? Yep. You're welcome, rationale?
Need for storage?
Well, he could also, he can also maximize his rear yard, it's fairly small to start with.
It's all, it's all fenced in.
Yeah. Okay, on the. Business that was tabled from last month, they withdrawn their application. So let's end of that one, far as I'm concerned. Okay. Minutes, I'm assuming everyone, everyone has read the minutes from September fourth of two thousand twenty five. Would someone like to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by John to approve, seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by Betty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to adjourn on the seven forty nine, October two, two thousand twenty five. So Blake can make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by John, seconded by?
Greg.
Greg, all in favor?
Aye.
You're getting good at this.
Well, I got to get a couple.